Pray with me. Our heavenly Father, thank you for gathering us together today with the opportunity to do your work and the work of Central Texas College. We ask your guidance and forbearance and grace so that we may proceed in a way that would be pleasing to you. Have faith on us, with us, and guide us when we have gotten off the path that you would have us follow. And the Lord's people said, amen. I compliment our chair for having prayer before the blaze because we are one nation under God. Join me as we pledge allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which sustains, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Honor, protect, and fire.
I pledge allegiance to three Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
You got it?
We have a forum president tonight, and this meeting is made informed. Members of the public can access this meeting through the website of Central Texas College. First item on our agenda is consider approval of amendments to the regular meeting with board trustees held from December the fifteenth, two thousand and twenty.
Thank you.
A copy of which has been invited for you to read. Any discussions or changes to the amendments?
Move approval.
Motion made second into approval. Any discussion on that motion? All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. The next item is the chairman's update, and Ralph Trony from members of the public to suggest additional topics for discussion or to address topics of interest with presentation within three minutes. Does anyone present who would like to address the board? Say nudge, and we'll move to the chancellor's report. Mr. Thomas?
Thank you. First, I'd like to announce that we have been selected to serve on the dual credit assessment task force by the Department of Defense. And Fred Drummond, who's the DOD Education Director, is a longtime friend of Central Texas College, and I've worked with Fred for probably thirty years. And we, along with the University of Maryland Global Campus, Trident University, AMU, American Military University, Coastline Community College, Webster, I think Christopher Judy's a Webster graduate, and National University, we are one of the six who will be meeting with the Department of Defense. So I've asked Dr. Garrett to be our representative for that, and she has graciously said yes. I think it's a real opportunity, not only just for Central Texas College, but for, really for us, but it's really for the military as well. And I think the thing that they're looking for is the elimination of these schools who just give out credit, and the credit doesn't count. When the students get around to graduating, they have excess credit that goes nowhere, it won't transfer. And so our credit, that we award, does transfer and does count forward to graduation. And so the Department of Defense, finally, after all these years, will be begging them to take a look at that. That's what they're going to do, and they've agreed that we're right. It needs to come to a screeching halt and to award credit that's really applicable to the degrees that are being awarded and the benefit of those soldiers. So that's a kudo to all of us. And so I know all the people that are with these universities and some will be working together. It's a great, great opportunity. Dr. Garrett, anybody have any questions about that report? Dr. Garrett is going to mention our SAC's fifth year interim report.
Good afternoon. Can you hear me? Is it working? Good. As you've heard over and over, we had to submit our fifth year interim compliance report last year to SACs, which is every five years, the fifth year between our accreditation, which will come up in two thousand and twenty-five. So we had to do this in the wonderful year of two thousand and twenty. We received the responses, and I want to give you the feedback. I'm actually going to read what we received. But we had to submit really two major documents. One is our compliance certification, our interim compliance certification, which was on about twenty-two different principles out of the eighty-some-odd, so they don't make you full them out for the interim report. And then the other one was the Off-Campus Instructional Site. Within the report, the compliance report, we also had to report out on our QEP study, which is a quality enhancement plan, which was implemented back in two thousand and fifteen. And we had to report out what we did, what we learned, what we didn't do right, what we wanted to do, what happened, all of that wonderful stuff, in the span of only ten pages. And we got that accomplished. So I'd like to read to you the letter from Bell Wheelan in response to the interim compliance report. Dear Mr. Yanopoulos, the Southern Association of Colleges and Schools Commissioned on Colleges Committee on Fifth Year Interim Reports reviewed the institution's compliance with select standards, those are the twenty-two I mentioned, of the principles of accreditation outlined in the SAC's fifth year interim report. The committee requested no additional reporting on these standards. In other words, we were okay. They can't just say, yeah, you did good. No additional reporting means, yeah, you did good. And so then, on the QEP impact report, the institution has adequately described the initial goals, the intended outcomes of its QEP, and discussed the limited changes made in the QEP, discussed the impact on student learning and for student success, and described what the institution has learned as a result of the QEP experience. So that's a thumbs up. We did do it on the QEP. So that's great news. So our fifth year interim compliance report, we passed with flying colors. Now, the Off-Campus Instructional Site report. There were about eight principles that we had to address for various offsites that they selected to visit. They selected Bethesda, Egypt-Side and North Hampton, Fort Rucker, Gatesville High School, Hill Country University Center in Fredericksburg, and the Frank Fickett Educational Center in Marble Falls. They visited those virtually. And in the process of reviewing the principle, what we wrote to the principals, they found that we were a little insufficient in eight point two A, which is the program-level student learning outcomes. So we do have one recommendation on standard eight point two A from the Off-Campus Instructional Site report, and I'll read what the committee said. The interim OCIS committee, which is Off-Campus Instructional Site, recommends that the institution demonstrate that it assesses the extent to which it achieves identified student learning outcomes and provides evidence of seeking improvement based on analysis of the results for its educational programs. So what we have to do by April nineteenth is just submit what we are actually doing to either rectify or prove that we are doing this by April nineteenth. And then in June, this will go to the Board of Trustees, the SAC's Board of Trustees, and if they review it and agree that we have met that principle, that standard, well, everything will be fine. And I have no doubt that we will meet that standard on the second review. But that being said, all of the other ones came out shining. They were very impressed with how we worked at our offsite locations. They were very impressed with the support their offsite locations get, and they were very impressed with the personnel, the faculty, staff, and students that spoke to them during those sessions, those virtual sessions. They liked being able to visit Egypt. That was wonderful. Do you have any questions? Do you have anything to add, Chancellor?
I mean, she's right. She made it sound easy and simple, but it really is not easy and simple. And many schools are getting big time on not meeting these standards. And the other standard that's not being met and is getting schools in trouble is finance. And so ours is, we're in good financial status. So I think moving forward, you know, as I told that team, I said, you know, it's not that we don't have student outcome because we do. It's just that we didn't capture everything. You know, educators, and I think educators more than anybody, don't want to admit when they're, when they have shortcomings. And so if you had ten things you wanted to accomplish in that classroom, for example, and you only did eight of those during the year, and you didn't do the other two because they didn't work, or you tried them, they just failed, you wouldn't report those. Well, they want that reported also. We reported the good stuff. We didn't report all the bad stuff. So it's a matter of collecting that information from the faculty and consolidating it into something that can be sent to SAC. So I really am happy and proud of what the faculty's done, what the staff has done for the last five years in getting us where we're at. That's a huge step. And then we have another five year coming, which is even bigger.
We're starting yesterday on that one.
So, yeah, again, thank you to everyone, including the board. You all are part of this evaluation. If you didn't know that, you do know that. And so all of the things that we ask you to do, the evaluations you do, and those things are all looked at. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Carter, Higher Education Emergency Relief Fund number two.
Good afternoon. You recall that in December, the Coronavirus Response and Relief Supplemental Appropriations Act of two thousand and twenty-one was signed into law. And under this new legislation, the Department of Education was given twenty-two point seven billion dollars to distributed institutions of higher education to prevent, prepare for, and respond to coronavirus through the Higher Education Emergency Relief Fund. So basically, this additional twenty-two point seven billion dollars, which is about nine billion dollars more than last year, is actually supplemental funding to what we received last year under the CARES Act. The, under this new, under the additional funding, Central Texas College was awarded an additional twelve point six million dollars, of which at a minimum, two point two seven million must be awarded in emergency aid to students. We continue to review and digest the guidelines that were handed down with these funds, and we're trying to reconcile, Bob can tell you, we're trying to reconcile what we heard on a call versus what we're hearing, I mean, what we are reading on their website. So as we try to reconcile that for both the emergency student aid, which Dr. Garrett and Dean Welsh will administer, along with the institutional funds, it's again, it's two pots of money under one award. We'll have more information for you, but we're really excited about that. Some immediate and noticeable takeaways from our reading so far is that most significant, one of the most significant items is that those students enrolled in distance education learning are now eligible. In addition, students no longer have to be Pell eligible or Pell recipient in order to receive funding. And then also, on the institutional side, it will allow us to offset certain expenses. So, and Mr. Liberty is unpacking that right now, so to speak. So a lot of chatter on our TACBO list serve, trying to figure that out. So that's the update for now. Any questions?
Any questions? There's that one. What kind of strings did they tie over that? Could we use any of this money to help, remediate, to our additional staff to clean the bathrooms and the countertops and, you know, what can we do with the money?
Well, according to our reading and what was included on their website, we can use it for lost revenue, reimbursement for expenses already incurred, faculty and staff training, technology costs for transitionally education, additional PPE. So there's quite a bit that we can use it for. I will tell you, the, one of the challenges will be spending all that money in a very short timeframe.
So PPP is covered, huh?
Yes, sir. PPE, technology, yes, sir.
Good. Thank you.
So just a quick question. You said two point seven million has to be toward students?
Two point two seven, at a minimum. So for, for example, the twelve point six million that we received, at a minimum, we must award two point two seven million or allocate that amount for emergency student aid. However, we do have the option of using some of the institutional funds towards emergency student aid as well.
That's, that's a lot of tuition.
It is. Any other questions?
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Carter. Tammy Samaruba, nursing students administering COVID-nineteen vaccines. I think she has an update for us on the plus or minus. Brown gowns?
I do. Good afternoon. Thank you for having me. We were, we were asked a couple weeks ago to be a part of the Resource Support Vaccination Project. Their mission was to support the health and wellness of the community through vaccination efforts. We were working with the district coordinator for the Texas Division of Emergency Management and with Bell County Deputy Emergency Manager Coordinator, and we're partnering with Temple College, it's us, UMHB, and Texas A&amp;M Central Texas. And so together, we have collected nursing students, and what they will do is they will participate. There's two sites, Temple and Colleen. We have asked to be kept at the Colleen site just because Temple College and UMHB have the Temple site covered pretty well. And so we've asked if we could be at the Colleen site. Every college will have an assigned day. CTC's days, Tuesdays, and so beginning February second, running through April twenty-seventh, we will have CTC students there for a four to eight hour clinical day. There'll be one faculty member to five to seven students participating in the vaccinations of our community. Some of the assignments, there'll be intaking patients, vaccinating, and then they'll be doing patient observation. So after the vaccines are given, just making sure that our students, I'm sorry, the patients are doing well. Our students will be eligible to get vaccinated themselves. Should there be availability of shots, once they've done the community, they are eligible to get their vaccines if they haven't had them already during that timeframe. And so we're excited about this partnership of all four colleges getting together and doing something together and coordinating together, and that we get to be a part of that. So I just wanted to kind of share with you what our students are out there doing and working hard to protect our community. So, thank you.
Tammy, you were also just interviewed, right?
Yes, sir.
And you're going to be on the news at five thirty, perhaps, five, five thirty at seven, eight, something?
Yes, sir. We just did an interview less than thirty minutes ago with KXXV, and so we will be on live this evening. I'm not sure if it's at five, but channel twenty-five, and so that'll be exciting. And that relates to the challenges and barriers we've had with clinical placement of our students during the COVID pandemic. And so we were sure to share that we are extremely appreciative of the support we've gotten from everybody here at CTC to facilitate our students being able to continue with clinical and with labs. So, yeah, I think this should go well.
Congratulations, Tammy.
Thank you, sir.
She keeps it in the committee.
Yes.
Any questions?
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Tammy. Mr. White soul, can I bring some update on aviation department?
Good afternoon. The aviation department is open, and we're flying. We have about eighty active students right now in our flight program. We are doing some face-to-face classes with our ground school courses. The FAA has given us a little bit of leniency as far as meeting face-to-face. We could do some stuff, secretness with the students, and we're doing that. We're reducing that classroom size and making sure that we're using our facilities wisely. And, but the students are really loving having that face-to-face classroom. I had a student in my office last night that was just going on and on about he's so thankful that he could come back, and this is his first face-to-face class that he's had in two semesters. So we are really enjoying that and having those students there. We're still being safe. The students come to the airport, we have a sanitation station that students come in, make sure that they're sanitized, the airplanes are being cleaned, and so far, we have remained safe in that aspect. The aviation department is also looking forward to hopefully the end of January or February. We have our flight training device that we purchased, finally being delivered. They had issues with the COVID virus. They're getting some parts for the simulator, the flight training device, but we got some update last week that they hopefully will get that to us by the end of the month or hopefully first of February. Unfortunately, the, a little bit of bad news, we had a training incident take place at the airport. An instructor and a student were completing a, finalizing a commercial lesson for the day, and inadvertently, the gear was not retracted. They had done about six previous landings, and on that six one, they remember putting it down, but they didn't verify that it was down, and the airplane suffered some minor damage. It actually is not an accident as by the FAA standard. It is an incident that takes place, and we're currently working on getting that airplane back up and running. Like I said, it was slight damage to the aircraft, both a student and instructor were fine, able to walk away from it. Like I said, if you look at the airplane today, very, very minor damage took place, and we were very lucky with that. And hopefully, that doesn't take place for another fifty years. So, thank you.
Yeah, we've been very fortunate. I think we've had, Rick, correct me, I think we've had two. We had one short landing, we had that soft landing that just occurred, and then we had two that landed in trees years ago. So we've had four that I know of, I think. Is that, that probably was about it?
Not too bad for fifty-three years of flight training.
And I told Rick, I said, as long as everybody's okay, and can walk away, and the door's open, it's a good landing. So, thank you. Anybody have any questions?
I've got one on the mechanic issue. Have you solved that?
So we do have, we got a fabulous full-time mechanic now working at the airport. He has about thirty years of general aviation experience, and he has been wonderful for our program. So he's come in, and we actually, not only do we have him, but one of our hander helpers actually has an AMP certificate as well, and he's been able to help on the mechanic side in getting the airplanes up and running as well. So been really fortunate.
And I know that, you know, Rick is, and Bill, you have asked before, we're looking at the older airplanes and what we can do with those. Moving forward, we're probably going to need some, something newer, so he's in the process of investigating all of our opportunities.
But the three-ten's still alive, right?
Yeah, the three-ten, yeah. I guess three-ten's still alive, wanting to put the vaccine.
The three-ten's still alive. Hopefully, like I said, with the other mechanic that we have onboard now, they've been putting it back together from the last annual inspection. We hope to do some renovations for that aircraft like we talked about in the past, and hopefully by the end of the summer, have that aircraft back up and flying.
Thank you. Dean Anderson, faculty in service. Now she's got to come up here and write.
Good afternoon. Can you hear me?
I hear you.
Thank you for having me. I was trying to think what I needed to tell you about our in-service. We do two major training sessions a year, a pre-service in the fall and a in-service in the spring. And we just had ours on January twelfth, thirteenth, and sixteenth. We had five sessions ranging from evenings all the way to Saturday, so that anybody that was working other jobs, agile instructors, could access the training. And also, now, with the virtual training, we had people from all of our sites, Continental Sites, Europe, and Seco Russe was there. We had Fort Hood in-service area. And as I was thinking about our in-service, I was thinking how much our training has changed since we've gone virtual and since COVID. We used to meet in this room. We were face-to-face. We videotaped, and we placed the training on the website. But the fact now that we can reach anybody, and they're welcome to come, and it's almost like a live experience with the conferencing venues that we use, we use WebEx, it's really an interesting opportunity to really share firsthand. And our, and our things that we present have also changed. We are now focusing, we had Scott Forens from Protective Services do a session on video capture and how we can take our online courses and now use our technology, kind of incorporating some of the synchronous virtual. It's not live, but we can make our online courses more live, more like live, and so how we can improve. Debbie Prescott did a really good session on collaborate and how to group and collaborate, and how you can visit your groups. And so we're really learning a lot about the virtual, virtual teaching. The chancellor and the deputy chancellors gave their updates, and then we had a virtual librarian talk about all the things that were available, that were new from the library. And Dean Starkey came and talked about COVID-nineteen procedures. And Assistant Associate Dean Kirsten Brooks talked a little bit about student issues and some of the things they needed to know with the processes. But I think the interesting thing is, I generally don't get a lot of thank you notes after our training. But we got a lot of thank you notes from the faculty, and I just picked two to read to you. This one is from Jean Silverblatt. Hi, Jan, I just wanted to thank you and everyone else involved for today's training. It kept me engaged and interested. I really liked the shorter format with each topic, as each topic was succinct and helpful from start to end. I also loved having the flexibility of having multiple days and times. I hope we will use this format even after the pandemic. The second one was from Teresa Zinke, who is our director of our Child Development Center. Good afternoon, I just wanted to thank you for a great meeting. It was wonderful, and I have a lot of ideas that I'm going to try in my courses, and my head is spinning, and I'm excited for the future. Thank you for all of you to make CTC a wonderful place to work and learn. Happy New Year. So I think the faculty liked it, and we liked it. Any questions?
Just want to thank Dean Anderson for the whole work that she did to do those. She mentioned that we were, all three deputies were there all five times.
For all sessions.
It was really, really, really good. I, you know, we didn't record any of us, so. But next year, I'd like to challenge the board, the day you attend. Tune in one day and attend.
Oh, that would be great.
See what it's all about. And if you do, you're going to be on there, so you'll be expected to at least say hello to whatever to the faculty. I think that you would enjoy it, and you don't have to spend the whole time on there, but it was a half a day. It was four hours.
Four hours.
So, well done.
Thank you.
And that's a picture up there for in-service. I guess we'll move on to the rest of the pictures, pictures of the month. Freddie? Welcome. Who's that?
That's me.
Dr. Garrett.
Hello, Jan. We're in the middle of Welcome Week right now. We decided to make it two weeks long this time, and Dean Starkey's area is hosting this and working very diligently all these two weeks to keep our students engaged. The purpose of Welcome Week is to make the students feel like they're part of the CTC community, and they have games. It's a little more difficult online, because normally we do it here and have a lot of events, but they're doing it fully online, have games, the two truths and a lie. A lot of us filmed that, various puzzles, scavenger hunts, all things to help students feel part of the CTC community. And I believe we've got a video of one of the two truths and a lie.
Yeah.
My name is Denise Wright. I'm the Marketing Communications Coordinator here at Central Texas College, and here are three interesting facts about me. I have studied abroad in Europe. I was once a news reporter, and I've gone skydiving. Can you guess which two are the truth and which one is a lie? Bet you can't.
And, and then later on, the, oh, is it going to, to the lie? Okay. Then later on, they'll post what the lie is. We filmed a section of the lie as well. And this was so that students could get to know some of our faculty. A lot of staff, a lot of faculty participated, and it's a, it's a good way. Many of the students didn't post their lies in Facebook, but they liked it. You could see that they, they watched it, so they still got to know us. Any questions about Welcome Week? Two weeks of it, last week.
Yeah, thank you, Dr. Garrett. Mr. Hart.
Yeah, thank you, Dr. Garrett. Mr. Harson?
Good afternoon. The pictures here are just a couple examples of some campus improvements that have been made over the past year or so. The top left is the Central Texas College sign at the Bell Tower entrance. The letters are concrete. They were designed and constructed and built in-house by the grounds department. The shield is made of metal, which was welded by our Industrial Trades Welding Shop and was painted by building maintenance. The bottom-left picture is the new memorial between the Science Building and the Technology Center, the planetarium. The fountain of the pergola were constructed by our grounds department. We're still waiting on a few of the military plaques. Those are supposed to be done within the next week or so. So we hope to get those out. And that should complete that project. The top right, you may remember the, or the gazebo that is between the academic building and the building 121, the Computer Science Building. Grounds implemented some new landscaping and hardscape around the gazebo and then constructed the shield. It was designed and painted by the grounds department and it was welded by the Industrial Trades Welding Shop. And they also backlit it too. So it has a nice glow in the evening hours. The, the bottom right is some mall artwork. You may have seen this. This has been up for a little while. It's located just north of the Fine Arts Building. It's a metal globe that has metal rings. The globe was designed by the grounds department, Wayne Dugger, and then constructed by Industrial Trades and Welding Shop. So essentially, I just wanted to let you know that we have a very talented group of individuals within our grounds department as well as with the welding shop. And it's always great when we can display some of the wonderful talent that they have.
Thank you, Mark. The, go back to that slide. Yeah, the, the top or right one, that's the entrance as you're coming in for COVID. We were made a comment about that last week.
Top of it.
Top of that, correct. Thanks, Mark.
No problem.
Bottom left is, that was, you know, I don't know if you remember, but years ago, Dr. Anderson asked me to see what we could come up with to commemorate all of the soldiers that we had lost during all these Gulf Wars. And in my attempt to do so, I learned that there's no one, no one depository within DoD that has all those names. And, you know, every branch of the service had their own and each warhead its own. And it was, it became a very complicated issue to try to, to do. And I think, Bill, you remember, we had some, some plaques made up. We were going to make them out of granite. And then, well, what if somebody's name got left off? How would you add it? So we fell away from that. And Mr. Dugger and Mr. Harson took this on. And this is in a, in a location that is conducive to a parking lot, which people can get to. So veterans groups and so forth want to come out and have ceremonies, they're welcome to do that. That's going to be open for them to do that. And of course, the one in the middle, at the top with the gazebo, that's kind of fills, fills in that gap. It's always been our kind of an ugly-looking spot. So hey, hats off to that. The bottom right, I don't know if you saw some pictures last year, some students climbed inside that globe and were taking pictures of themselves. So they, they really took advantage of that. That's, that's really a neat thing. So anyway, just want to make those comments. Anybody have any questions about these? Okay, next slide. Okay, stone on campus. I think that's self-explanatory. Yeah, the only ones that liked that were the ducks. And I guess everybody got to stay home that day. So anyway. All right. Sir, that completes my report.
Thank you, sir. Next item on our agenda is discussing certain approval of November 2020 interim financial statements. Any questions? Mr. Libby?
You should have this in your read-ahead packets. And what I'd like to say is if you have any questions, I'm more than happy to answer them. If you don't, I'd really like to go into full discussion on the next agenda item.
Any questions, Mr. Libby? Now I'll take the motion.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve the interim financial statement of November 2020. Any discussion on the motion? All those who favor the motion say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. The next item on our agenda is discussing approval of December 20 interim financial statement. Any questions?
Okay, sir. The next item is the December report, which gets us up to date. As you know, we always report the preceding month in our board meetings. And we run a little behind when the audits take place. So this gets us current. If you take a look at that report, which you received in advance, and you look at the first page and you look three lines up from the bottom, you see the bottom line. Current year increase is almost the same as it was this time last year. Actually, it's slightly better, not enough to talk about, but it is slightly better. But the important part about that is that's happened during COVID, which for the life of me, I didn't think we could do that. But what that shows is we have been able to cut expenditures at the same rate as our revenue decreased. Because if you look at the next page, it's pretty easy to see that we have an overall decrease in revenue. This time a year ago, our operating revenue was $19.8 million and this year it's $17 million. So even with that decrease of almost $3 million, we've been able to keep the bottom line about the same. And that's because we've cut this amount of expenditures as we have with revenue. I'm real happy that we've been able to do that. I'm surprised that we were able to match it. And to be honest with you, I'm not sure how much longer we can keep it up. And the main reason for that is the latest report I got, actually just a few minutes ago, I made a note and adjusted this from what I had written down. As of yesterday, which was the last day that we have spring enrollments, which are real close to being final. You know, there's a little bit of last-minute housekeeping that gets done this time of day, but there's not much that's going to change. We're down 15.4% from last year. So if you see, once again, back to the first page, if you take a look at deferred revenue, which kind of shows you revenue that has been received or generated, but we haven't actually earned it yet because the semester hasn't taken place. And that's a good indicator of where your number is going to go in the future. It's down $2 million from this time last year. So while we've been able to hold the line and keep us flat through the first third of the year, when you finish December, you finish the third of the fiscal year, I think it's impressive and we should be proud of it. I hope we can keep it that way for the entire year. I'm not convinced that we can. I will remind all of y'all that the budget actually had us at slight loss, very small. Hopefully, we can do our best to keep us there. But I just want to make sure that everybody knows, A, the staff has done an incredible job to keep those expenditures down. But there's more ahead as enrollments are still not, they're still not at the level they were pre-COVID. And then even with COVID, if you remember this time last year, we had started the semester, but it was a couple of months later that COVID hit. And we had the students that dropped at that point. And now we're following up. So it'll be really interesting to see where the spring takes us and where next fall takes us. And one last piece, all of us financial folks around the state kind of keep track of these numbers. And we're pretty much in the same place as everybody else is. I don't remember seeing a single one of the community colleges, the CFOs anyways, come out and say that their numbers were better. I think some of the presidents sometimes share that with the chancellor. But the folks that tell it like it is, tell it like it is. And they say, nope, their numbers aren't up. So I just want to make sure to know that it's not CTC.
I'd like to, in echo of Bob says, even talking to the big, what I call the big, the big five schools around the state, although their enrollments are huge, they're down as well. And they're, they're facing the same issues we are. The smaller schools, they're down as well. Their numbers aren't 15% down. But when you have half the budget we have, if you have a 5% loss, you're, you're having trouble. So everyone's there. I have read and I have shared with the deputies some articles recently written about community colleges and why they think that we're, we're down on enrollments and why the community colleges are, are lagging behind and suffering a bit. And everything I've read so far, we're doing. So we're not guilty of, of something that we don't know about. So we're doing all the right things, our service area, overseas and so forth. And the way we extend out, what Dr. Garrett reported on SACC saying, hey, you guys have done a great job and you're being supportive and you're supporting your students. You're supporting your faculty, your staff. We're doing all those things. We're reaching out. A lot of the community colleges weren't reaching out. We reach out. We have people all over the place knocking on doors all the time, trying to get students to come to school. So there's, there are other things going on. And I really think it's the economy. I think part of it is, is the free money that's there allows them to stay home. They don't have to go to work. They don't have to go to school. So, you know, but eventually, if we can continue to keep our head above water, we'll, we'll come out of this and, and we'll do better. My challenge to the faculty and to the, to the staff was I want to become the best community college in the state. That doesn't mean the hardest. It doesn't mean the easiest. It means the best. So they think about that and, and we'll, we'll get there. So, one way or another. Thanks, Mark.
One, one final piece, and it kind of echoes a little farther on the question you had asked of Dr. Carter about the stimulus money. One other item that they did tell us we can use this new money for, it's just I have yet to figure out how we're going to do it and how we're supposed to report it, prove it, et cetera. But they did include in their paperwork that we could use this money for lost revenue. Thank goodness, because I'll be honest with you, it, you know, it sounds like great, just spend it. But spending eight or nine, $10 million is not as easy as it sounds because there's still certain items you can spend it on. We talked about the PPE. And today, we've already spent about $1 million on PPE. Mark has more items coming in. There's more stuff to spend. But they've done, spent a lot of stuff on PPE. So if we're allowed to use that money and can figure out how to do it for lost revenue, that's going to help basically put some money back in the bank where we've lost some of this revenue from the previous years. I have to send a report every month to the LBB that shows what we have estimated in lost revenue. So, so those numbers exist and it's, you know, we're looking at five or $6 million since, since the pandemic has started. So if we're able to recognize that back into the college finances, that would, that will help tremendously. Even though, as I shared with Mr. Hollinger, you know, when the government keeps printing money and giving it away, eventually the money that you have is not worth what it used to be. So if they continue to give billions of dollars away, it's going to cost you $10 to buy a loaf of bread. But that's, that's for future happens.
Any questions, Mr. Libby?
I just got one question.
Yes, sir.
In reference to some of the things I've been reading about energy costs, it appears that we're looking at a 2% for a gallon of increase in taxes on gasoline and a 20% increase on energy running into the summer schedule. Well, with an air conditioner out here, it's pretty critical. I don't know how we're going to get around that.
Mark, what's our, what's our current contract through for those items? And sir, if you'll remember, we generally, we buy energy in advance when we can lock in good rates. And I think we've got a couple of years left probably on some of those, though, Mark, I do not remember for sure.
On the electricity side, we are out for about 10 years and that is stacked. And over the course of the 10 years, our price actually continues to drop. And then we're, for natural gas, we're in for probably the next four years or so at a fairly good rate. What I've been seeing as I was on a conference call with Tradition Energy regarding electricity and natural gas, and they're expecting that, as you had mentioned, prices will increase in 2021 with a slight decrease estimated for '22 and '23. But I think we're well positioned with some fixed costs over the course of the next five, 10 years.
So, so it may not be the energy piece that hits us, but as you know, sir, those costs are going up for all of our suppliers. Their costs will go up. So we may not see it on the energy side, but we'll see it when we buy products from those folks.
We contract for it. Do we pay for it in advance also?
No, sir.
Will they give us a discount for that?
We can reach out and see if they, see if they will.
It doesn't take much of a discount to beat a quarter of a percent through getting on our CDs.
Yes, sir. Yeah, when we, when we have negotiated those rates and Mark does, I'll be honest with you, an unbelievably incredible job. There you go. Get your credit right now. For what he does and the folks that we work with that have helped us on that. I'm always amazed when I see the rates that we're able to lock in. I would be thrilled if I could lock, lock in that long in advance at such good rates personally, which I've not been able to do, but we've been able to do it here. But we can always ask Mark to see if making any type of repayments would, would give us any further savings. Because what Mr. Hollinger and I have discussed before is us getting that additional savings quite possibly will be worth more to us than the interest that we can earn on a couple of pennies that we get when we put our money in investments currently. Follow-up on that, sir.
Any other questions? Now I'll consider a motion.
So move.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve the December 20 interim financial statement. Any questions? Any questions on the motion? All those who favor the motion say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Motion carries. Next item is discussing certain approval of purchase of robotic laboratory equipment from Technical Laboratory Systems Incorporated, amount of $145,440. Ms. Prescott?
Good afternoon. So I'm here to request approval to purchase robotic laboratory equipment from Technical Labs Systems Incorporated, using Perkins Grant Funds in the amount of $145,440.
Any question, Ms. Prescott? Now I'll consider a motion.
Second.
The motion was made and seconded to approve the expenditure of the grant funds. Any discussion on the motion? All those who favor the motion say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Prescott.
Thank you.
The next item on our agenda is considering approval of facilities master plan.
Good afternoon. Yeah. At the board workshop, we talked and gave some highlights of the facilities master plan. As you know, it's been going on for quite a while. We actually deferred it when COVID hit. Otherwise, the plan is essentially the same. So with that, I would just seek approval for the approval of facilities master plan. Or I'd be answering any questions.
Any questions, Mr. Harson? Now I'll consider a motion.
Move approval.
Second.
The motion was made and seconded to approve the facilities master plan. Any discussion on that motion? All those who favor the motion say aye.
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 Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Harson. Our next item is discussing certain approval of policy number 185, free speech, peaceful assembly, and expressive activity policy. Dr. Harson?
Good afternoon, Jan. As I mentioned last week, safety policy number 185, free speech, peaceful assembly, and expressive activity is in direct response to Senate Bill 18. This policy incorporates all the requirements of that particular legislation, which, which outlines specific criteria, which I mentioned to you last week. So at this time, you're seeking your approval of the policy.
The motion was made and seconded. I heard a second. Any discussion on our motion? All those who favor the motion say aye.
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 Motion carries.
Thank you.
Discussion on certain approval of Board document number 440, order of elections. Ms. Higgins?
The college is scheduled to have an election on May the 1st. And this document is required by the law. You can put it on our website that lists. by the law, you could have on our website, that lists early polling places and on election day as well. And I do need each trustee's signature once the document is approved.
Any questions, Ms. Higgins? Motion made, and I heard a second. Any discussion on the motion? All those who favor the motion say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Our next item is discuss and consider correction, recommending topics for upcoming agenda items, announcements by board members. Dr. Pierce? No recommendations were made at this time. And the announcement for the time and location of board workshop, the schedule for February sixteenth, twenty twenty-one, in this building. And the board meeting is scheduled Tuesday, February twenty-third, twenty twenty-one, in this building. Start time's at one o'clock. There's no executive sessions today, and subject to other discussion, we stand adjourned.